Will the clerk please call the roll?
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart? Fisher?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Item number four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action of the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 19, 2016. And B, approval of claims in the amount of $58,721.80 and payroll expenses of $139,421.15. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Benson and second by Councilman Miller to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item six, Reports from Boards and Officers. A is the Alva Library Board Report from September 6, 2016. Mr. Benson.
My meeting was nearly a month ago. I think we did go over the library's annual report to discuss further as they happen for months, interior renovation plans, and also the summary of the upcoming events. Library Board meeting tomorrow.
Does the council have any questions for Councilman Valencia?
It is our roof totally fixed. No leaks with the big rain out the other day.
It has been recorded. Good.
Awesome. Councilman Miller, will you give the Airport Commission Report and the Finance Committee Report, please?
The Airport Committee met last month. General claims and then got a report of fuel sales. They're holding somewhat steady. There's not a huge increase or anything. They are down from where they were a couple of years ago when all the larger planes were coming in the oil field. Had a fairly good discussion on rental rates for hangars and storage spaces. The airport is getting ready to build the new eight-pack tee hanger and discussion on what those rental rates should be is being discussed. Hopefully at the next meeting that will be on the agenda again. We were talking about what the rates were for the current hangars and trying to find a square footage cost for what the new ones should be. There is some, we're pretty far apart on what members are thinking rental rates should be. And what the rates for the ones are now is not really in discussion, but what for the new ones are. The two hangars that are currently there that have been leased were, the other six packs were built for the airport and given to the airport. They weren't built with airport funds. The current hangar is being built with airport funds, so there's discussion on what we should be charging for that, if it should be enough to pay for the building, if it should be spread out over 30-year payment, 40-year payment, what that should be. So hopefully we'll kind of get that narrowed down at the next meeting. Other than that, there was not much at that meeting. The Finance Committee meeting earlier, general claims and expenses were paid, large claims. The airport had one for fuel of $20,000. The rest were our standard monthly payments. Nothing real large that doesn't happen regularly. We did have a long discussion about what the federal law changing in December about exempted and non-exempt employees. And so Finance and Personnel Committees are going to be looking into both of those. Joe Don, you've got your presentation on that. And looking at a different time tracking system to help ease any issues that may come up with federal regulations along those lines in the future. So that's still to be discussed for the next several meetings until we figure out which way we want to go. And that would be it.
Does the council have any questions for Councilman Miller? Thank you, Wes. Cemetery Board on September 14, 2016.
Well, they had a pretty routine quarterly meeting. They did, because of some additions to the board, they did elect a chairman and a vice chair for the board. Discussed and ultimately approved and recommended that the council approve the donation of the pavilion. Also, there was some discussion about the development of a Veterans Memorial Plan, Master Plan, and some discussion about going to Tourism Committee for some street repairs. But other than that, it was a pretty routine meeting.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham on the Cemetery Board meeting? Thank you, Joe Don.
Going to Tourism.
The thought is, is there maybe some additional money there that, I mean, the cemetery is believed to be a tourist attraction. People do travel in to visit the cemetery, stay if they're doing genealogy research, stay overnight in hotels. There is that thought. And that was the, I mean, it hasn't, see, there was no action taken on it, but it was discussed. So they did not decide to go, but that was the thought process behind having the discussion is that the cemetery as a tourist attraction and bringing people into town for that.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Joe Don. Councilman Benson, can you give a report from the Tourism Commission on September 21st?
Yes. Apologize for my voice and my coughing. I hope I get through this. We met last, not last month, almost two weeks ago, it was a Wednesday after our last council meeting. And we approved giving $6,000 to the Chamber Secretary for their salary, which we've done for the past, they've done for the past several years. We also approved putting an ad in the Red Carpet Country Visitor's Guide, which is a magazine that goes out to visitor centers and motels throughout Red Carpet Country. And that was $2,350. We approved giving the Northwestern Ranger Rodeo Team $15,000 to help them with their expenses on the rodeo. That's also something that's been going on a lot lately, I mean, the last few years, is that. And as you know, that brings a lot of people into our town to spend money and stay in motels. We also approved giving the museum $50,000 to move the Cedar Grove Church into town and revamp it and make it look like it did back in its glory days for, to preserve the old and to add to their museum. And they're also going to, once that's finished, they're going to try to advertise and hopefully rent out that church for small weddings and things and venues like that. So that will maybe help them make some money in the long run too. And that's it.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Benson? Thank you, Bryce. Councilman Fisher, can you give us an Alva Rec Center Board Report from the 21st?
Majority of the board, our discussion was over the action on that meeting. It's all consistent with the majority of the discussion. He bids for, we denied, he told us to try to save a little money and do some of it ourselves and sent out another bid for just one portion of it instead. They were asking for the maintenance and the top dressing. And we're looking at top dressing, finding someone to do that ourselves instead of adding that on to the business. And that was all for the steering.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Chad. The mayor's report had, again, it's a busy time of year. There's been Northwestern's homecoming. Had a lot of people in town for that. I'll commend the street crews for getting the stripes painted again this year and looking good. Downtown looked great. All the businesses did a great job. I have, in terms of council-specific business, I want to thank Mr. Melton. After the last meeting, he has informed me that he is moving to another ward and is not going to be able to, by moving, he won't be able to fulfill his term in Ward Two. So we're going to be having an appointment for that position probably at the next council meeting. We're looking also at having two other council members possibly going off, going off the council for moves as well. So when those announcements are made, we'll, I think it's safe to say Councilman Miller is going off in Ward Three. I don't know that the other move is completely finalized yet, so I'll hold off on saying that. But we will be seeking a council member for Ward Three as well. So in each case, I appreciate Joey for stepping up and being on the council. And Wes, you've been here for a good number of years now, serving the Finance Committee. And I'm not sure this is your last meeting or not, but, not yet. But we do appreciate your service as well in many, many capacities. As always, council members, if you have suggestions for people to fill these seats, I'm all ears. But we'll be, once the vacancies are, once we have the vacancies, we'll have, is it 60 or 90 days to, 60 days to reappoint. So we'll be working on that. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Item G is City Business Manager's Report. Mr. Dunham?
Well, a couple of the items that we've got, two of them addressed are to deal with ARC issues. One is for the mowing bids and one's for some shade structure bids that we're in the process of preparing. Currently, we are working on quotes for the top dressing, both the softball and the baseball fields. We hope to have this, the quotes in place and the company identified to do this, so that the fields are usable by the spring 2017 season. At this time, we really don't think the top dressing can be done during this calendar year. But we are, so we're going, and before that is done, we're going to be working on sprinkler systems on those fields so that the sprinkler systems are up to snuff when the top dressing gets done and we don't have to go back and dig up freshly top-dressed fields. After that, we'll be discussing whether or not to bid out the regular mowing of the fields or not. One of the priorities for the Rec Center was to have shade structures over the softball fields, over the bleachers for the softball fields. We've met with a couple of companies and we're currently evaluating whether or not, or what type of structure to go with. There was a committee appointed by the Red Park Chairman that elected that we should go with a direct bearing poles with a canvas-type awning. And that would be an awning that would be very similar to what we use at the swimming pool during the summer months. Be removable and hopefully that, by being removable, we could prolong the life of it. This would go over, to cover the current areas by, or to be placed over the current bleachers and also wrap around the home plate backstop. We've been working on checking the water wells, static water levels. And as of some of the, at the last check, we checked about five or six of our active wells and we could tell that the rains were actually refilling our, the aquifer, where we get our water. The levels had only changed, have gone down a few inches since three years ago when they were checked. So our water levels for our water wells are looking, it looks like they're sufficient. One of the things we will need to be looking at is the actual pumps in the wells to make sure that they're able to pump water out of, out of the hole into town in an efficient As Councilman Miller alluded, we did talk, spent a lot of time talking today in the Finance Committee about overtime law changes. These changes could affect, the changes will affect the classifications for exempt and non-exempt employees. And what this does mean, what this means to the City of Alva, it could, it could require us to be liable for more overtime for additional employees that currently don't get overtime. And we're still in the process of evaluating this and will probably be for the next month determining the right course of action for that. We've still got a couple of positions open, looking for, currently actively looking for an auto mechanic and a full-time paramedic and a full and part-time EMT basic. You'll see there a list of upcoming meetings through the October Airport Meeting, which would be next Monday. And Mayor and Council, that would do my report and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Joe Don, looking at your report, my memory was jogged, but the Alva Arena Authority is meeting on October 4th and representatives from that meeting will be here at our 17th council meeting to give a report to council.
That's the date I had on my calendar for the Arena Authority.
Any questions for Joe Don? Thank you, sir. Item seven is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution Number 2016-008 Establishing New Water and Sewer Rates. We talked about this in the Utility Authority last meeting and we've talked about it before when we did the rate structure changes for the non-governmental agencies that are served by the City of Alva Water. Joe Don?
Don't have very much to add from the last time, from last council meeting when we discussed it in the AUA meeting. The rates are less than what our regular residential commercial rate is. It's about 66% of what the regular rate is. It does mean that for the rate classes that we would affect, both inside and outside, for governmental and school rates, prices would go up, their utility bill would go up. And it would look like for all of the businesses that are affected by that rate class, it looks like we would see an increase of about $23,000, $24,000 a year in revenue collections if they continue using the water in the manner in which they're using it now.
I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-008.
Make the motion, votes, approve Resolution Number 2016-008 Establishing New Water and Sewer Rates.
Second. Have a motion from Dr. Hannaford, second by Councilman Miller, to approve Resolution Number 2016-008 Establishing New Water and Sewer Rates. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item eight is Discussion and Action on Resolution Number 2016-009, A Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget Amendment in the Amount of $3,511 in Insurance Claim for the Vandalized Cemetery Mower.
This is a routine item. We did not expect to collect the $3,511 at the budget time. We'll point out that we did have to expend $3,900 to replace the mower. The difference that we see there is the deductible that the City of Alva has to pay off of our insurance. But other than that, it's a pretty routine item. The difference that was, the difference that we see there will either have to be made up in transfers to the cemetery or through budgetary savings through the cemetery department operations.
Was that a new mower?
It was a new mower.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-009, A Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget Amendment in the Amount of $3,511 for the vandalized cemetery. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Benson, to approve Resolution Number 2016-009, A Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget Amendment in the Amount of $3,511 in Insurance Claim for the Vandalized Cemetery Mower. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item nine, Discussion and Action on Accepting the Donation of a Pavilion from Arden and Nikki Chafee and Debbie Wilson in the Amount of $9,600 as recommended by the Alva Cemetery Board.
Mr. and Ms. Chafee and Ms. Wilson did build a, construct a pavilion and you've provided pictures of that finished pavilion at your station this afternoon, this evening. After discussions with auditors and everything, it was recommended that both the Cemetery Board and the City of Alva approve accepting the donation. And it was about $9,600 to construct and rock the pavilion. The City of Alva did pay for the, I think it was last year and last budget year, it was a budgeted purchase, the ramp from the road to the pavilion. We did pay that last year and I think that was around $2,900, if I remember correctly. But that was, that was a purchase we made. And that would have been the only expense that we incurred on it. And upon the acceptance, it is ours to maintain.
Does the council, would the council make a motion to approve this, accept this donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of the pavilion at the cemetery in the amount of $9,600. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Melton, to accept donation of a pavilion from Arden and Nikki Chafee and Debbie Wilson in the amount of $9,600 as recommended by the Alva Cemetery Board. Is there any further discussion? I do have one question. Will we be recognizing the donor in any way for the contribution?
In what manner?
I don't, sign, picture in the paper?
We can. We have not done that in the past. We have sent letters of recognition to them, but we haven't had to have a photo shoot, so to speak, of that. We can certainly do that and we can certainly work with the local newspaper on making that happen.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And we certainly appreciate former Mayor and Mrs. Chafee and Ms. Wilson for that contribution. Item 10 is Discussion and Action on the Approval of Friends of Play Foundation Retaining Wall Replacement Project at Hatfield Park. We do have representatives from the Friends of Play with us this evening who would, I assume you'd like to give us a presentation if we don't mind at all. Please.
Okay. The faces have changed since the last time I've been here. I'm on the chairs and actually the treasurer of the organization, our president, has a church function. Hi. This is Shanae Melton. Oh, sorry, Melton. She is one of our newest members. Right now we have six, that's, I don't know, it's thirty, four to six people. When we started back in 2011, we came to you, going to council and got approval to do all the repairs, the existing toys up as we could and to remove parts as needed and you know, except we were finally able to finish that this year with painting the White House and the ship and get all that done. But in that process, we found another problem that wasn't present at the original time and that's the retaining wall of the existing toy on the east side that is, that wraps around. The timbers are falling on one side and they can brace up three bar, one of the sides. When they put that new slide back on there, the replacement is broken, it's now four feet from the retaining wall, the requirement's fixed good. So, I got these done, you have a mic, there's some pictures. And then the existing layout and the new layout. And then one tree's over there. But what we're proposing is essentially shifting the wall at the angles that's pretty close to the slide right now and straightening it out because it kind of angles back towards the side so we can shift it to where it's straight. And basically extend the retaining wall back about four feet. And then that graphic, sorry, that graphic area that is blocked by the sidewalk and the railing and the retaining wall, that is almost impossible to get into most. And we've been told that originally that was supposed to be a little garden area and never got done. It's got stickers and everything else. So what we're wanting to do is pull that, actually just remove that entire thing, make the retaining wall, throw it all the way behind the toy and then connect to the sidewalk and go down. And then possibly a little TV mirror in it back in the corner and put it back. We've prepared a proposal to send out to anyone that's interested. We have ran an ad already and sent out postcards to local companies to see if we would get anyone interested. I have had one contact up, he knows that we're waiting on approval to finalize the bids. Joe Don was at the request to make sure that everything was in order for the city's indemnities and we don't have to bring the ad. But I just wanted to kind of show you this and that we still have the information to go through and just notice the difference.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Ms. Searcy?
So, you're basically not doing anything with the toy, you're just...
No, we painted it last year. This is just the wall behind it. And right now, technically, you're supposed to have ADA something in there, the feed gravel according to the safety codes, it's still fine for a five-foot wall height. But when, one of the reasons we want to go back with the concrete retaining wall is eventually we want to put in additional toys in that area and connect and place spaces. So, we will go back in and recycle everything at that time. And if the concrete wall's already there, we'll have an easier time just going in and laying the concrete and then the corn rubber and it'll just, it's one step closer and we'll go to the front to do it for a moment.
So, Joe Don, does the foundation and overseeing construction, they just give the first?
Yes. They, it's their project. I've looked through their bid packet and it is very well, in my opinion, very well-prepared for this project. Probably goes above and beyond what some of the state law requirements are for this price range of a project. But it looks, it looks very, very well. And yeah, we will basically at the end of it, accept it like we've done the one we just finished, the pavilion we just finished. And at that point, it becomes ours to maintain.
One thing, and one other thing that we were looking at doing eventually with that retaining wall, possibly if we get it, if we get the retaining wall done this year, possibly going in next year during the Fourth of July celebration and doing a fundraiser and part of that and letting the local kids come in, by Melton's kid, they can put the handprints on it and we'll seal it over so that the handprints will stay on the wall. And it'll kind of be a memorial, but it'll also be a fundraising thing so that we can go in and get additional toys. And this east side is one of our biggest areas, so we're trying to have all of our pieces in place when we get ready to go to the share trust. And there's another trust in town now that we can go to try to approach. And then we're hoping to get some more ADA toys in there and we'll turn the committee for that to promote the ADA play for out-of-town people and stuff. So, trying to have everything in place before we start getting all these toys in there is like doing this sort of thing and everything.
Will the foundation, are we looking to address any concerns of that at the moment?
We do plan to, that is, after we get all the toys in place at Hatfield that we have projected out, which still could be a few years, we do plan to address it and at least get a few more toys in there.
Any other questions? Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve Friends of Play Foundation Retaining Wall Replacement Project at Hatfield Park.
Make a motion to approve the Friends of Play Foundation Retaining Wall Replacement Project at Hatfield Park. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the Friends of Play Foundation Retaining Wall Replacement Project at Hatfield Park. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Friends of Play. You've done a great amount of work at Hatfield Park. I remember playing there as a kid and it looks tremendously better than I remember it and so, thank you.
I lived there for 18 years now and that toy that we got, looking to do with the retaining wall, was put in there, I went to college.
Oh, really?
The wall survived a while, but it's probably been in there the last quite a year.
The boat and the lighthouse were rusty 30 years ago, so, thank you.
Speaking of the park, has anybody been down to see the new lights in action? Are they pretty good? I saw the lights, but I haven't been down in the dark.
I think they're pretty good. We looked at them before the Fourth of July, they were, it was well-lit down there. For what the lights are, I was surprised at how well-lit it was.
Yeah, I think that that will, since we're talking about that, I think that it'd be, it's going to enhance a project that the museum is going to put on the 29th, which is to have a...
Tombstone tour.
A tombstone tour. And they'll be leaving from serving meals and leaving from the pavilion. So, the lights will certainly be a benefit at that time.
Thank you again. Item 11 is discussion and action on the application from Randy Rhodes to withdraw retirement funds from city pension plan in a lump sum. This is similar to several other withdrawals of retirement funds. It's required that the council approve this. There is no additional cost to the City of Alva by Mr. Rhodes taking this direct payment from the retirement fund. And so, I would ask for a motion to approve this application unless there's something else.
Nothing else, I'd be dead.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Randy Rhodes to withdraw retirement funds in a lump sum. Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Benson, second from Councilman Melton, to approve the application from Randy Rhodes to withdraw retirement funds from city pension plan in a lump sum. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melon?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action to appoint Steve Ward to the Alva Hospital Authority for a five-year term ending in October 2021. Terry Klein has asked to be replaced on that board. His term has expired this month. And Mr. Ward, I've discussed with him and he is willing to serve the term. And I've discussed this with the hospital authority chairman as well as the hospital CEO and all parties are willing to move forward in this direction. So, I would request a motion to approve Mr. Ward for the hospital board.
Make a motion to appoint Steve Ward to the Alva Hospital Board for a five-year term ending in October 2021. Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Haniford, second by Councilman Benson, to approve the appointment of Steve Ward to the Alva Hospital Authority for a five-year term ending in October 2021. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item 13 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anyone would like to make a comment, please approach the podium. Public comments are limited to two minutes per speaker and we ask that you please identify yourself. Is there any public comment this evening? Thank you all for being here. Item 14 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Do the council have any remarks to share this evening?
I do. I think we need to do whatever we need to or have to do that's legal to get rid of the pigeons downtown. I think it's a terrible mess all over. Pigeon droppings everywhere, feathers blowing around. It's almost scary to walk around the square. You might get something in your hair, so I think we need to do, we need to do whatever we can do to get rid of it and not just transplant it somewhere else because pigeons are none to fly back to where they were, so.
There are a couple of eradication methods that we're currently evaluating and seeing how that all works out and how it entails, but we're working toward that.
Any other remarks or inquiries from council members? All right. Thank you all. We will close the Alva City Council.